On the way. Okay, call the Mr. Planning Board meeting the 22nd of October, 2023, it's 6:30. I need a motion to move the regular meeting to the head of the schedule for the purpose of taking care of the A and R 3.1.
It's a excel.
Hi everyone.
I was through.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, got that motion? I get a motion made, do I have a second?
Carol.
That's okay, John, don't get up.
You didn't get that on camera, did you?
Motion 60 and I can still do it.
Well, I have motion made and seconded. Okay, open the regular meeting. I need a proposal.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Salcha Koenig. Carol Vittorio So.
What are we voting on?
We vote.
Hugo.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Jason Parry. Dean Ballier.
Yes.
John Sisah.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, motion to move 3.1 to the head of the schedule. The A and R. Okay, I have a motion made, seconded, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. 3.1, A and R for 54 Carter Street, map 9 lot 13. Just for a matter of explanation, and we, the site plan for this site is also scheduled for tonight, but the A and R has to be approved prior to the site plan.
Yeah, Jason.
He went that way.
Yes. I'm not gonna climb over John's head.
Oh, okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, the Lord Chris Anderson, the Panning Engineering here behalf of DC Mahoney LLC. Uh, for you is a A and R plan to subdivide, um, as just mentioned, 54 Carter Street lot, uh, map number 9, parcel 13. It's the intent to subdivide into two lots, uh, one being for an existing house, um, on the property and for the second lot being what's for you tonight for cycling approval. Uh, lot number one has a frontage of, um, just a little under 133 feet. Um, based on the zoning, you're required to have 50, so we have plenty of frontage. Uh, lot area is 14,394 square feet, um, with the lot requirement being 5,000 square feet in this district. So you have plenty of area with a lot width of approximately 90 feet through the front of the building. So, uh, there's plenty of, um, area and buildings in the property lines that is set back appropriately. So the house has to be demolished. Uh, lot number two has a frontage of 57 square, or has a frontage of 57 feet. It narrows down and then expands into the buildable portion of the lot. Um, with the property. With the lot area of 27,607 square feet. So, uh, the lot's been designed appropriately and the property lines again have been situated so that the building and lot is appropriate.
Setback's a little bit set.
Chris, what's the question behind lot two? I'm just curious. Is it open?
It's, uh.
City land, city land, is that right?
They know right away that they kind of just continue abandoned, so now it's just city land. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, motion is in order to endorse.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Any further questions? Here now, call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Motion is in order to return to, uh, public hearings. Motion made, oh. Sorry. Uh, on the motion, on the second motion, okay, is that the motion is in order, is the 20-day, um, appeal period, should work for 20 days and is run concurrently with the site plan to be presented later this evening if it's approved.
All right, that's fine, but wouldn't it be anyone?
Well, see, no, see, you'd have to, it'd have to be sequentially. So you'd have to do the 20 and then do 20, okay? So typically you do 20, your A and R has an appeal period 20 days and then you say. Typically, A and R is done a month or two months before and there's a time period and then we get the site plan. This is, we get the site plan and the, and the setback coming at the same day. So we gotta have an appeal period. Yeah, both 20, but they work concurrently.
That's right.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I'm thinking, but.
I don't know, I, I was just being on the safe side.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't know.
So moved, that's the, uh, appeal period is 20 days running concurrently, the site plan and the A and R.
We'll just amend the, the motion.
Just amend, oh, okay, just amend the current motion. Motion would move and then it would work concurrently.
Yep.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Okay, we're now going into, uh, open public meeting. Uh, open public meeting for a site plan for 54 Carter Street, map 9 lot 13.
Lot two. All right, again, the Lord Chris Anderson, Panning Engineering here behalf of DC Mahoney LLC, uh, for the A cycling approval for a multifamily, uh, facility at 54 Carter Street. Um, this proposed development.
Can you turn that just a little bit more, I can't. There you go.
So we're good?
Yeah.
So, um, for a little bit, sorry, so the existing lot was just previously subdivided into two. Um, the property currently contains an existing single-family home with paved driveway and other associated amenities. Uh, that, uh, building will be located in lot one. It's the intent to develop lot number two as part of the overall development. Uh, this portion of the property is primarily a combination of grass and woodland. Um, it's just a general neighborhood backyard at this point. Um, it's the intent to, as I said, to construct a multifamily, uh, development for a total of five units, uh, four two-bedrooms and one, uh, three-bedroom unit. Access to the site provided by a 18-foot wide, uh, paved driveway which will extend into the development. Um, and then provide access to the various parking areas. Uh, each one of these units will be provided with a garage, um, but we are accounting for the space outside of the garage as part of the actual parking count, if you will. So.
It becomes storage.
Especially in these kinds of units, but, um, the site has been laid out, so there's an 18-foot wide, nine-foot wide, uh, parking stall in front of each garage, uh, with the additional parking spaces required based on the zoning ordinance. All in all, uh, we need a total of eight parking spaces and we're providing eight as part of the overall development. Um, relative to landscaping, we're required to provide a total of, um, you know, three trees, uh, providing three trees along the, uh, parking area of the site. In addition to that, we're also providing an every Tree Planting Shrub Line effectively right along the property line to shield this use from the, um, original residents, if you will. Uh, stormwater will be accompanied by a several deep cuts, deep sump catch basins which will capture the runoff and direct it towards an underground storage facility. Uh, there's two proposed, one on the lower side of the site as well as one up near the parking lot area. Uh, this will capture and infiltrate runoff back into the ground. This is a very jet, uh, sandy site, so infiltration is a peak mitigation factor for this. Um, all in all, everything will discharge into a lower rain garden feature before discharging off-site, um, based on calculations, it provides all the process stormwater management regulations as well as the city of large stormwater ordinance. Um, water, it's, water will provide via a new six-inch ductal main. Uh, which will extend to the property and terminate with a hydrant and then provide the various, uh, connections for fire and domestic services in the site. Um, and sewer will ultimately tie into the main with the Carter Street, uh, with new provisions being made for the existing house to tap into this line, uh, for the purposes of convenience and construction standards. Um, once everything is said and done, the area will be loaned and ceded for permanent stabilization, um, and be practically a residential development. Uh, with that being said, uh, we did receive department head comments. Uh, we apologize for the delay and gave responses back to the second response. Um, as everybody's aware, the flooding kind of impacted us quite a bit, so we are a little bit behind on call. Uh, but we have provided responses to the latest round of comments. Um, and with that being said, if there's any questions from the board, I'll, we might have to answer them.
I think the only comment that you haven't changed is was the, I think was the fire department said your access route had to be 20 feet.
Correct, so part of that revision was we provided a two-foot brush zone footprint on the outside of it and we did have a conversation with the fire chief today. Um, we did talk with Bill Hannigan from our office and he did say that was acceptable as long as he has a 20-foot clear span to drive a vehicle into the site.
Do you have anything that, right?
That was like the second, unfortunately.
Okay. What has to be a condition? Okay, go ahead.
So the homeowners association question, it looks like, is still up in the air?
It's still up in the air, uh, it's not known if it's gonna be a rental development or.
And so that should also be a condition that if, if it is, uh, then the homeowners association is required.
Correct. If the seller of the, or the.
And then we need to, we need to see that at what point, John, that was.
What's that?
If, if the homeowners association is created after approval.
Yeah, that can be created because this, this does not require a homeowners association.
Well, it might, is what they're saying. So they haven't determined yet whether there'll be a homeowners association.
Yeah, no, it's a choice.
Right.
And they, okay, if they create one, then they have to let us know what it is and what they, what they have, okay?
And so that should be a condition.
Yeah, that could be, if, if they do it, that they advise, yes, you're right.
Snow storage?
Uh, we have the area right along the, practically the outside elbow of the site. Uh, we have people pull in or primarily push the snow into this corner as well as a little bit else surrounding the site as well.
That gonna be enough, Chris?
There's seven percent.
You need, you need eight spots, right? Are required and you provide eight, not count the garages, right?
Correct, so we have one stall in front of each garage.
Yep.
The third, uh, the three-bedroom unit requires two by ordinance, so there is an additional spot adjacent to that and the supplemental parking for the other four units is located opposite of those units.
Just how long is the drive before you get to the bend on the corner from, from the road?
About 100 feet or so?
So that's a lot of plant, no, it's not that, but it's a lot of plant, there's a lot of snow pushing down there. I don't know if you've got enough allocations, you might have to do something about pulling it offsite if there's more.
Obviously, if there is a situation where there are supplemental storms on top of one another, that is a requirement regardless of the site.
Yep.
Uh, but based on our calculations, we're providing.
Seven percent.
Seven, I'm saying units, uh, seven percent of the overall pay area, so.
Do you want to go through the, um, department head comments and your responses?
Yeah, Chris, the, the initial assesses in building inspectors here, um, stated that there was not enough room on this lot to proceed with the.
But it's not, it, it's.
Did that get resolved?
It's been taken.
Yes.
It's, that's a resolve.
Because that, then, the house is not part of it.
Right.
Okay, so it's just this lot and its residential safe.
And they said a townhouse can be considered an apartment or multifamily as an opposed to an other use.
Well, the definition of a townhouse allows it.
No, I just was reading the banter back and forth, I didn't know if it got resolved.
It got resolved, yeah.
That was resolved, and, and this is okay.
Yep, perfect.
Initially, you said no, but no, because you haven't included in the house, that's why you have the A.
Same thing.
In the A and R for the house.
Yeah. The inspector didn't include to begin with either.
But they're, they're all.
But that didn't resolve as well, Chris?
There was a new packet on everybody's staff there.
Okay, so mine's a little bit.
So everything is resolved except for.
Yeah. And, and the question on the, uh, on the question of trash, they have a dumpster, okay? So then they have a commercial dumpster there, so they won't be using city trash.
We're being closed dumpster, typical of every development if you didn't say.
Okay.
Do you have a waiver request? Regarding landscaping, or landscaping plan?
Yes, the waiver has been requested from section 2268.1.
It's the landscape plan.
The landscape architect requirement.
Everything else to me looks like it's cleared. Assuming the building commissioner is, is.
We wouldn't be able to pull a building permit anywhere.
So we have one waiver and two conditions, otherwise I think it's.
Right. Yeah, good, do you have anything else? Do we have any questions from the audience? I'll ask one more time, do I have any questions from the audience? Okay, yeah, uh, have everything been satisfied with the board? Okay, motion being ordered to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Okay, continuing motion in public meeting for site plan application for 10 Jungle Road, map 300, parcel 13A, bank with drive-through restaurant, with drive-through and retail. Something, oh, okay.
We should be going on the new file, right?
Yeah, who knows, there's a lot of files.
There was two files, not that much.
I was gonna say, we killed the whole forest, didn't we? It'd be this one.
This is Jeffrey Dirk? Okay. We're ready for you.
Yes.
Yes, only.
Um, we asked that you go to the front of the town, of the county town hall.
Okay.
Do you want me to move this to the front somewhere?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, you either use our easel or if you want to use your easel.
Yeah.
I was trying to keep you guys from having to turn your heads.
Well, we, we're used to it, but they wanted for the, uh, the local TV. Take that back down. It's a limited design down.
That's why we do that.
I got him to drop it.
Yeah.
There you go, excellent idea.
All right, perfect, well, thanks, thanks again for having us. Again, Josh Klein, I'm a partner with Stonefield Engineering and Design for the site civil as well as the traffic engineer for the project. We're excited to be back, it's been, uh, it's been a little bit, but we've been hard at work, um, to kind of get to this point, so. Um, the board recalls, probably four months ago now, we were here. Um, we kind of took a look at a plan very similar to what you're seeing on the screen and we kind of agreed, I think the best step for everyone, both, um, the city as well as the applicant was to bring in, perform a traffic impact study and to bring in a peer reviewer. So we've done that, we prepared a traffic impact study, it was reviewed by your peer reviewer, um, who's here tonight. Um, they issued comments, we responded to the comments, they issued an updated letter stating all the comments have been addressed, um, and made some kind of conditions and recommendations which we have agreed with. There's kind of one, I think we can speak to a little bit, that we just want to clarify to ensure that the applicant's protected because unfortunately, we're gonna be dealing with the MAPS DOT a little bit, which can be a challenging agency, so. Again, we would love to see this project built, we don't want the condition written in a way, um, that would prevent that. So, this is the latest, um, and it actually has been updated since submitted because we included the latest comments or conditions that were outlined in the peer review. And what you're seeing is a, is a kind of improvement plan that was very similar to what was presented to you in the spring. So I think it's good because it should reassure this board that, you know, kind of our, our office was moving in, in the right direction. Um, and it was kind of encouraged and, and kind of reinforced by the peer review that was conducted. Probably the biggest thing that you won't see here is we have agreed to do some signal timing modifications. That will help some of the queuing. Now, again, the, the really bad queuing we're seeing is in the afternoon, which is kind of not really when the Starbucks is peaking, but a lot of our, our data is conservative and we're, you know, kind of, you know, at this point, trying to make a really, you know, kind of a good improvement to this area, even maybe beyond, you know, what is kind of being directly impacted by our site. Um, so kind of highlighting some of the improvements and some of the kind of additional items that were agreed to is based on the latest review.
Before I put this, before I boot this thread, I just want to point out again that the, the heavy queuing is in the afternoon because that's when the existing businesses are at their peak, yours will not be. So heavy queuing will result in the morning from your presence, I just want to make sure we don't cause that.
Correct, yeah, the, the biggest peaking is in the afternoon.
Right now.
Correct.
But again, once.
And it will remain in that, on that.
I, I highly doubt that, but we'll.
Yeah, but again, wanted to kind of highlight the improvements, so again, looking to kind of provide new striping, new signage. One of the, a nice addition is traffic from left does not stop. That kind of lets the drivers know that are sitting here that there will be vehicles turning. Again, extending that striping out to create a little bit of additional, additional queuing, uh, moving that stop by forward. One of the conditions kind of agreed to was extending the, a new double yellow down the whole road. Probably the biggest improvement, we did show kind of the board the crosswalk, but we have done kind of rapid flashing, um, beacons on either side to kind of, again, if someone is going to cross, they'll push the button so that the applicant has agreed to provide those. Striping improvements being made at our, our driveway. Um, and then onsite, the biggest change would be that we have this, now this pedestrian connection, this ADA compliant path from the right of way up into the site and kind of connecting both the buildings. Um, so those are the, kind of the improvements you see and are easy to see and read. And then again, as well as we've kind of, we're making signal timing modifications, um, to the signal. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan that you're seeing and then, you know, I can kind of talk about some of the conditions that were in the, um, the peer review letter and then, and then Mr. Dink would be, I'm sure, can kind of answer any additional questions or if the board has any questions for him as well.
When you were here last time, you talked about the striping where you have a lane that goes in and then a lane that turns onto Jungle Road. Um, I assume, and I assume that stuff, I can't see it from the.
The lane that goes in.
Lane that goes into the, the other side into the Walmart parking lot. Right now, when you turn off that street, there are two lanes that go into Walmart, none that go into Jungle Road. There's striping.
There are two lanes.
That go in that way, there's not a single stripe that goes onto Jungle Road. And you were gonna resolve that when we were there last time, I just want to make sure that's still true because I can't see it on what you have.
Yeah, we're not, we're not showing any kind of additional arrows there, uh, but we are striping.
That might be a straight line, a straight.
We do have a dash line that kind of creates the separated lane, so kind of the one that continues straight and then the other lane, then there's another dash line.
Okay, great.
To kind of help guide.
Great, that's what I was gonna write, just so I can see it on there, right?
I, I'd like to hear from the peer review. Because you have to do all the changes and, uh, I think we reviewed them and the advice. Let's, let's see where we are with that, that was a big error.
You can, how are you, uh, handling?
We're not gonna make this up, oh my gosh.
Just introduce yourself for the.
Well, you know, you can't do it, I don't know.
Is that like, yeah?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm the managing partner with Vanessa Associates and as you heard, we've, um, we've undertaken a peer review of the project on behalf of the board. You should have two letters in your file.
Yeah, we do.
So just in terms of focusing on some of the comments that I heard from one of the members of the staff this evening. So, I think it's important, probably as you've heard in the initial presentation, that a lot of this traffic is, what's, I know it's past by trips, but it, as it relates to the project site in Jungle Road, it's all new traffic. Um, so from the standpoint of looking at kind of the, the focus areas, which I think were the focus areas of the board as well as really, we have two very closely spaced intersections and the interaction that occurs between the signal here, this inter, intersection and the queuing, probably, uh, most importantly, was something that we really focused in on in terms of the analysis as well as the improvements that you, that you see here. So the, the issue that we had asked them to look at predominantly in the last review was dealing with looking at how the interaction between the queue on the Jungle Road approach to 117, interaction with this intersection and what those backups look like. A lot of times when a traffic analysis is performed, it looks at intersections in isolation, but when they're close together, they have an interaction. And so what we asked for is what's known as a dynamic model. The dynamic model looks at how does the traffic operate at both of these intersections at the same time so as they're feeding traffic. So as we're looking at this intersection, there's a few things that were, um, shown as part of the analysis. The first is this is a high crash location. It's a high crash location both in terms of the number of crashes that are happening um, in relation to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. It's also on the state's high crash list, um, it's been listed for, for several years. So, in looking at that intersection, it's not just the traffic operations, it's the interaction but also the safety of the intersection. So, as we looked at how this project might be able to improve operations, first looking at the queuing, you are right in terms of, if you look at the overall intersection, not a significant impact, but when you look at the Jungle Road approach impact. And so even during the morning time, the morning time period that you mentioned, that's when the delays increase significantly and the queuing increases. And, and it's that dynamic of the addition of the, um, the Starbucks coffee shop. So, not a big impact on 117 because of the fact that it's pass-by trips, but once that traffic turns off, comes to the site and then needs to leave, it not only changes the traffic patterns here, but it changes the queuing at the intersection. So maybe efficiently using the capacity, but it creates issues on the queuing. So this plan, as they've shown it, it does a few things. It extends the vehicle, uh, the storage in the queuing lanes. And then I think as the member was mentioning, these tracking lines are probably most important because this queue will extend back to basically what the goal is. The tracking lines keep people properly positioned so that they're not turning into the back of the queue, um, that's there. So it's an improvement as it relates to that. Uh, the other thing that we've asked the applicant to undertake at the intersection, dealing with both traffic operations and safety, is looking at the way this traffic signal functions. Uh, we had asked the applicant to look at the crashes that are happening at this intersection and one of the latest submissions they had is actually what's known as a collision diagram. So you're looking, you can see every single crash that's happened at the intersection, where it's occurred on all of the approaches and the type of crashing. So as we're looking at safety at the intersection, what we see is the most of the crashes are happening in 117 and their rear end crashes. Rear end crashes are typically a result of, can be congestion, people are just trying to get through the intersection. Members mentioned, it's congested and so, um, you're trying to get through the red light or the yellow light, someone stops in front of you. That whole issue as well of about a vehicle stopping in front of you and you striking in the rear end can have to do with the timing of the signal. So those are the yellow clearance intervals, which is to carry you through the signal, um, and then the all red, which is to allow no one to move and let the vehicles get through the intersection. If those aren't timed properly, you can have rear end crashes. And the lastly is if the vehicle detection system is not functioning properly, so it's not detecting the presence of a vehicle. Because what it's supposed to do is if you get to the stop line and it detects the vehicles there, it actually holds that yellow light or the green light to let you clear the intersection. So as we look at that predominant crash pattern, what we've asked the applicant to undertake there um, is to check the yellow and all red clearance intervals. Um, the timing, as, um, the way the calculations are done has changed. And so we've asked that that be evaluated and determined if it needs to be adjusted. Uh, the second part of it is to look at the vehicle detection system and if, in fact, it's not functioning properly, sometimes it's just broken because as we've seen kind of with weather conditions, um, that affects the way the detection system functions. You take water in those pipes, um, the, the, uh, the wires that make up the loop can break as the pavement stretches. Make sure it's functioning properly, it needs to be repaired. Make sure it's functioning properly, if it needs to be repaired, to repair it. Um and then, as you heard mentioned, retime the traffic signal because. As we have someone who's going through today, but now they want to get a cup of coffee, instead of a through movement, they become a left turn movement. So that left turn phase may need additional time to clear that traffic, the same thing coming back out, um the change of those traffic patterns may require some. Changes to the timing, so we've asked them to undertake those improvements and as it relates to the signalized intersection there. Um I'll just mention before it's brought up, the concern of the applicant, as you know, with any type of wiring in your house or anything, is as soon as you go in there. You find something's not working or you try to do one little thing and all of a sudden it short something out, so. The concern is to try to confine what's being requested to really this traffic signal timing and not get to something where. They need to start replacing signal equipment, um our intent is not to have them start replacing signal equipment because either Mastod wants an upgrade. Or they go in there and something just breaks, but I think from the standpoint of what really is, is retime the signal. Make sure the yellow and all red clearance phases are are proper and then look at if if it's just a matter of some loop detector is not functioning properly, just repair it. But we don't want it to get really beyond that where Mastod says, you know, hey, geez, we'd like a video detection system, there's something that's not up there today. The rest of the improvements, as you see along Jungle Road, now just explains some of the changes that were made, so. Um as you know, MART provides bus service over to Walmart, we want to, and the applicant has agreed to, a transportation demand management program, which. For the employees, it's really to link them to the bus service. This sidewalk with the crosswalk and the rectangular rapid flashing beacon provides that linkage to allow that to take place. Um so we think that's a significant benefit, can allow for trip reduction associated with the site. As well as just if there's someone at Walmart who wants to come over and get a cup of coffee, it allows for all of that, or. You park in Walmart and hopefully, you know, rather than drive over or walk over, so that's something that's been added. We originally had asked the applicant to look at if this driveway could be shifted in this direction to line up better with the driveway into Walmart. But I think as you can see, if you look at the plan, if you were to do that, it really impacts the parking within the site. So because of that, what we've asked them to do is extend the center line down, um because what that will allow is for proper vehicle positioning as they're approaching the intersection, both. For left turns coming out as well as left turns coming in, um the same thing as what we're dealing with the tracking lines up there, so we do see that on site. So this plan incorporates everything that we've asked the applicant to do, um and I know they've worked on it since our original reviews, we're we're in agreement with all of this. Uh we also checked in terms of looking at parking supply and vehicle queuing within the project site. And based on our analysis of that, there's more than sufficient queuing based on our um studies that we've done for Starbucks as well as just looking at public operations, so. It's our opinion with the plan that's shown here with the improvements that's shown, um it's sufficient to accommodate the additional traffic on this project.
Yeah, have you had input from uh MAST, pardon the gent, Taser?
Not, we we have not, we work with the city's traffic safety officer in terms of looking at these improvements though.
Okay, so we don't know if they have agreed to these changes?
Correct, we we had suggested typical with conditions as it relates to state highway issues, it's subject to Mastod review approval, so.
Okay.
We'd ask the applicant to undertake the improvements, I would say Mastod never refuses free traffic signal retiming, uh we work on a lot of projects and.
Okay.
As long as the board conditions.
Yeah.
Then that condition would go, they'll ask the applicant, because the applicant will make an application.
Okay.
Mastod will ask for the board's conditions to make sure that the board's approved the project, so it's a project. And that the board's condition was that they retime the signal and when they do that, they'll process the application.
Okay, okay, that's good, make sure, I want to make sure we cover the bases.
Yes, correct.
So just one question for me, first of all, you did a great job on this study and then I. I was incredibly impressed with all the.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
It's phenomenal, so this is not a criticism in any way, just just a question from from my own understanding. So I understand completely why you'd want to hedge a little bit about, I don't want to go too far in the box because.
Correct.
What happens in a scenario, it doesn't have to be this project, but any project, where you do go in and it does turn out it's actually much worse than you anticipated, what happens at that point? Do we just say, oh, well, we give up and we return?
No, it's really how you structure your condition, um because what it can say is that you, if you structure a condition in such a way that it says that. The applicant's going to retime the traffic signal as as we had said, test and repair the vehicle detection system. However, there's no expectation the applicant is going to replace traffic signal equipment, that covers the applicant. Um the extreme example would be Mastod said, well, then we don't want anything, but they wouldn't really do that, it may be that what they come back and say, okay, retime the traffic signal, but we'll leave it at that.
And you gave us that language in the in the final letter?
I can I can work with um your plan or to come up with a language, but that, I would suggest that to the extent that you're comfortable with all of this, just to really say that. You know, up to, you know, or does not include the replacement.
Just hearing how you're saying it, that's really important, so the the conditions are what MS do, I want to make sure we have the wording right.
Yes. Yes.
So as long as you're both okay with that, I can work with that, you can both work with Elizabeth afterwards, once we approve it, to get the language right on culture.
Yeah. Yeah, any um and it's a very good question, because even aside from this project, Mastod is always. Because they're not seeking a permit at this point for Mastod, they're not in that process. Mastod always is, their first question is, who asked you to do this? And then it's for the city, okay, submit the city's um conditions of approval. So if those conditions of approval are written in that way, Mastod has it and then they understand, okay, you're seeking a permit for this work that's going to be by the city and then they'll uh they'll review the permit.
At what level is that intersection working? Is it a C, is it a D, is it an F?
It's so, in as you look at it, just in the overall intersection, it's it's somewhere around a D, it's probably more than that capacity, if you look at individual approaches.
Okay.
That approach is an F or E during those time periods, so that's where it's always very, as I talked about, the dynamics of the um.
Right.
Interaction between intersections, if you look at the overall intersection, it could be working beautifully, but if you look at the individual approaches or individual movements, you'll find there. They might be overcapacity, and that's the issue really with Jungle Road approach, because the intent of the signal, it's moving this traffic on the state highway and holding the traffic on the side.
Right, 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 yeah, the priority is on one seventeen.
It is, right.
I can tell you, I'm driving it every day, the only thing that's any turn into the project isn't the problem, it's getting out.
Right, they hold the traffic on the side street and move the traffic up and then.
And oh, yeah, like four cars to go through and end it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And again, just that's the part that worries me, so I appreciate the extra queuing.
I I think what you, everything that you've done here, and just one other question, I. In that striping way, it it makes them like an island there, as to queue, would that, if we actually made that an island, would that work better?
That'd be great.
It certainly would be better, I think, as we think about the time we live in New England and we get snow, this gets covered and then, you know, you might not see those things. It certainly would be better from that standpoint, I think the overview needs to be checked as the truck turns, to make sure they're not swinging.
Well, that's and that's my other question is. Not included in this, okay, and we don't even have it on that, but we know that on this side right here.
Yes.
Okay, there's a trucking terminal being proposed, it's in the works and it's coming down the line.
It's the.
With a, you know, there's still documentation to be signed and paperwork, and I'm trying to say, what does a truck turning race do with this?
So if we're this, we're actually, one of the conditions, we're agreeing to that no tractor trailers are permitted to load on the site?
I know you're doing that. I'm not talking about that side, I'm talking about the side.
No, no, so but why I think it's important is if a future, you know, applicant were to come in, I think that would be a great requirement for them to look at is what. You know, but they may have to do something additional, like put a Mountable Island in or something to work around the truck wheels, but we're not introducing. WB sixty sevens or or new trucks as part of this project, no trucks are, no tractor trailers are permitted on the site.
Yeah. On that site, but what what's happening is, on this site right here, we know right now there's a proposal, we haven't seen it officially yet. But you know, it's in the works to put in a truck in general there, so I I'd rather be proactive even at this point, to say, hey. Is, you know, is that even feasible? And and what kind of, what does that do to that intersection? Do we have to recon, totally reconfigure it then, I really with the track, that's, that can't be part of my discussion tonight, but I'm just looking for general information.
So the next.
So certainly, the the a truck turning analysis is a neat neat thing to do this, it the everything, because of how wide this is, the truck.
Yeah.
Can swing wide and then come back in to do that, but the trailer's gonna drag, I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Okay. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, realize that.
So it may be that this media can extend it up to some point here and then the pavement markings, so that the rear wheels can track over that.
Uh huh. Okay, just just general feeling, because that's gonna need another.
Absolutely.
Love studying.
How about the police department agree with all the regulations and uh what was going on with the analysis?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you know, I, all it seems like we're doing, I I commend the applicant, because it all seems like we're doing at this meeting is blaming them for the past. And blaming them for what could be coming, so, because the this crash. This this problem with the intersection isn't their problem, they've not even there yet and they're and they're still and they're agreeing to rectify it the best they can. I give them a lot of credit for that, so I don't think now we should be putting the onus on them for anything going in in the future, as well.
No, 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 I'm just looking for general information.
Oh, I understand, but they're not even there yet, and these problems already exist.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I realize that. Okay.
Yes, yes.
So the the only kind of additional item in kind of working with the applicant, because we, you know, our goal is to make sure that this project, you know, can be implemented successfully is.
I think it's really a question.
You know, if they, and we could kind of, I think, we've had a great experience working um with their team, I think we were able to get through this in in two reviews, which is pretty good. Um is potentially making this condition, something that would allow that the applicant will go to DOT, we will request the approval. Um and if they approve it, we will implement it, but have it conditioned in a way that would allow the site to move forward, because our only concern is that the timing aspects. Will delay the project.
Oh, yeah, I.
So I think that would be the only thing maybe to add to the language would be, you know, we were, you know, all of this would be would be added. And we would agree to do the signal timing and everything, um but if kind of DOT says no, or it would be, it would kind of allow us to start the work on site. You know, get this this great tenant here, both great tenants here, and then again, kind of implement the DOT.
Condition is.
Yeah.
That we request, we don't require.
Right, since always.
We request, we require to bring the information forward, I am no better than requiring the DOT to do anything.
But what's the usual time, I mean, so now that we put it as a condition, now they have to file a permit with DOT.
Okay.
Correct.
So how long does that application process usually take, securely us?
So it can be, it can be six months for signal retiming, it depends, usually the district office that handles um this area is very, they're they're trying to do as much as they can in-house rather than send everything to Boston. So I would say it should be no more than six months for me to dig rate the application, which would allow them to get the site up and running, do the construction work in the midst of while they're doing that.
It's great.
Only four months, you could have good plans.
For months.
Yeah, I would say seven to nine months.
For.
I think we're gonna do that kind of work, if they file the permit, right?
Right.
Right, that's good.
Okay. Well, I think it's a lot of work, I think we've gotten a lot of things done. And uh. And we just hope it works. Okay, do you have any any other discussion from the board?
I don't, can we close it?
Well, yeah, we gotta answer the question from the audience.
Well. I'll I'll be quick, Patrick McCarty, uh we own the building at forty two Jungle Road down the street from you. And we were the original engineer for the central mass project, just just to be certain, so you're proposing signal retiming in the crosswalk with morning beacons, are you proposing striping currently?
We're proposing striping improvements as well.
Yes. Okay, so we've owned the building since ninety nine, our office was there from twenty ten to twenty twenty two, so driving that thousands of times. My my two cents is that nobody leaving the Walmart Plaza understands that Jungle Road starts at the signal and comes around. So there's a ton of misbehavior running that stop sign. So if, obviously extending the center line is great, yeah, the top one, they run that stop sign and just cut, continue right out to the lights.
It's the top, you're talking.
Oh, right, right, right.
So extending the center line through the intersection is great.
And that's what happens.
If if even possible, I know it's kind of non-traditional, but a dash white edge line to also define that outside edge of Jungle Road. So it's more clear to everybody that this is the road and these are driveways off of it, would be my suggestion. You following me? Because right now.
That line is the pressure point there.
Right now, the solid white edge line comes from the intersection and it continues right around the arc and up the Walmart driveway, and so you have this big expanse of pavement that. No one really knows what it is, so I'm saying a dash line that kind of defines the right edge of Jungle Road as you're driving to help further define everybody, exactly, yes.
That's one line.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's on there.
I know it's non-traditional, right, but I'm just trying, because it's a really funky situation, and then the existing left turn pocket.
That's the issue.
It it gives the the, to me, it was meant to be a left turn pocket to then continue to the light to make a left onto one seventeen. But it gives a connotation to drivers that it's a left turn pocket to go into Walmart. And so there's a lot of confusion at those two spots when you're stopped at the left turn pocket and the right lane that should be a hard right to go eastbound on one seventeen. So may, if you're gonna do striping, maybe look at those couple tweaks right there, and then I agree with Carol, the stuff further on, we need to address, people run. Uh Old Mill, I bet you fifty times I had near misses going down jungle and people just blow right out. Old Mill in front of you because they think the world ends at the Walmart driveway. Yeah, but I but I and I think you agree. A hundred percent, that that's the future from. It shouldn't be, the onus shouldn't be all on, yeah. No, no, so I'm just saying, if they're proposing striping at that intersection, just to consider those two suggestions to better define what Jungle Road versus what are your.
Yeah.
Stop signs.
I I as you were talking, I just got an idea, and you said something about they don't pay attention to the stop sign. How about one of these flashing stop signs, is that, are those more effective?
Stop sign where?
The existing stop sign at Walmart.
At the old mill.
Yeah.
At that.
Oh, yeah.
The exit from Walmart.
Yeah, the problem is just when you sit.
I think that you're fine with.
Nobody knows if there's anything in the other direction.
You know, the person that's probably going through the stop sign, regardless if it's flashing.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
It's not, you know, we are doing a, we are doing a new stop bar here.
Yep.
And we are adding a sign that traffic from the left does not stop, so that was kind of working to try to help that, I think. The trouble is, and you know, unfortunately, we all know it, is there's, you know, certain, we can keep implementing things, but they really, you know, they're not gonna unfortunately stop the person that was gonna roll through the stop bar.
No, totally agree.
Roll through the stop sign.
I I totally agree with that, and I and I want the project, I'm in support of the project, um my only suggestion was, is there anything we can do outside the box, non-traditional.
But.
Traffic engineering to try to better define that no man's land that this is Jungle Road in from one seventeen and this is the Walmart approach.
So it's it's non-traditional, so I need to think about it, but the one thing I would say is we typically, if you put those lines through the intersection, they're gonna, they won't even. If they get a few months, that's all, because people are gonna drive over on it.
Yeah.
And so they're gonna wear off and they won't be there, be effective.
Yeah.
So you you could do it, but they they.
Yeah, I'm not, and I'm not asking for an answer on this bottom, just if you're gonna spend money and go out there striping, just think through it, that's all I'm asking.
Consideration.
Yeah, just send Patrick half that though.
And I was, I was saying the same thing, but that's.
I'm not costing him any more money, if he's out there painting, I'm just.
Yeah, that's a.
I don't mind, the intention is not to cost anymore.
It's turning on. And that is an end deck.
I have a question that 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 come up to me, on the maintenance of this, what you had to show at the first time, does it become the responsibility of?
Yes, so I think that's where it's, everything's gotta be done per city standards, so if the city just, you know, as an example, if they want, you know, these markings should be thermoplastic. All the stop lines, which is thick, that usually lasts about seven years.
Right. Yeah.
Yep.
So it's really, if DPW asks that certain things be done, if this is paint, the center lines can be painted or thermoplastic. So that defines kind of the life of those, but if you put thermoplastic center lines down, usually we don't paint on top of them, you gotta put thermoplastic back. So I think if the applicant's gonna do it, there's certain things that should be thermoplastic material will last longer, there's certain things that should be painted because the city's gonna go out forbid for. Painting, I have a year of things we do, and so you'd want this to be something that the city would bid for anyways. But stops, anytime you've got stop lines, they should be thermoplastic in crosswalks, this should be a thermoplastic crosswalk, and it should be a thermoplastic stop line.
Does that define on the drawing?
It, I think it's gotta be per city standards, so.
Okay.
I mean, whatever city, whatever DPW is gonna acquire for that.
So that'd be a requirement, that it be per city standards?
Yes, all of it, because the city will need to issue the permits or.
Okay. So you guys will do initially, but then the city will go after that, not you guys, but yeah.
Correct. Yes, yeah, and it should be something that the city doesn't have to have a, you know, higher contractor, especially if you do certain things, that thermoplastic is one of the things that's special.
Right. Okay, so the striping would be to city standards? Okay.
So there'll be a lot of conditions, but it's good, much improved.
Okay. I don't have anything else, so I have any other questions for the audience? Ready to final time? Questions, any other questions from the board? Okay, motion would be in line.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Get a closer hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't know.
All in favor of. And closing the.
We have a motion, we have a motion to close the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of say aye?
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Open public meeting, the site plan application for twelve eighty one Central Street.
No, that's a question.
Open meeting. And at the same time, open open public meeting for a special permit use application twelve eighty one Central Street.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. For the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering. Okay, tonight on behalf of the applicant, Newlandn Style, uh, who is uh under purchase and sales agreement to purchase a two point six acre parcel of land on Central Street through twelve and Lomester, currently owned by my father Dan. Um, he purchased this property, he's entered thirty years ago now. John was here the first time he came through for site plan approval for one large industrial building on the site. Um, that never came to fruition several years ago. We subdivided the lot into two parcels, came through the board for site plan approval for the Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witnesses. It's now here constructed on the site, Lomester Animal Hospitals on the opposite side, and Domination Plumbing is across the street from us. So my father listed the property for sale. Newlandn Style approached him. They originally gonna build themselves a new building in North Borough and then saw this piece and decided to pursue this. They are a site work and hardscape contractor. So the application before you this evening is for a special permit site approval for a contractor's yard consisting of two buildings. Uh, this one is thirty five hundred square feet. Then we'll have an office area here and garage bays here. And then a space between the buildings and a freestanding garage building here for their equipment. New curb cut in off of Route twelve with a twenty four foot paved driveway to uh paved parking for handicap and office. And then the the rest of this is proposed to be uh reground asphalt paving primarily for loading and unloading of equipment. It's a shame to put down your standard pavement and then run an excavator on it and destroy it. So the regrind can be compacted and it's plowable and it doesn't erode, but it also, if you unload a piece of heavy equipment and they tear it up, you should patch it and make it look good again as opposed to the conventional pavement. So we did pave in from the street with the granite radiuses, twenty four foot dry aisle, and then uh the large area here at the back that has fifteen spaces for employees and company vehicles. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, six um concrete bins like you might see in houses for storing stone and sand and stuff that they might need for their projects. You okay?
Excuse me, yeah, I'm fine.
So back when um Whitman and Bingham, now Haley Ward, did the site plans for my father, um, they designed a detention basin that we built years ago when he first looked at developing the land, we ran the cals on it to do the discharge for the Kingdom Hall project, and then we reran the cals on it again for this project. Uh, to make sure that it meets current stormwater regulations as well as the city's stormwater bylaw. And this is the grading and drainage sheet. I seriously don't go regular. Please.
And if you got a couple chairs.
Chairs.
At least one for you.
After you go, you can set. So uh basically grade up to the right of way line and then grade down into the site. We have a pair of double catch basins that go through a water quality unit. And then a manhole to step in elevation down to the existing stormwater basin. We have been mowing it twice a year. It's it's due for a mowing now, so part of the plans uh call for that to be mowed and make sure that the capacity is there clean around the two uh outlet structures. Minimal grading of that back slope, just a little tie out grading that's there existing. Um, water's in the street. It's a old thirty inch cement and tin water line that runs all the way to the Wachusett Reservoir. So we will tap in off of that for domestic services to each building. Sewer, we brought sewer up the street years ago from the, oh, where the trailer park is. We ran sewer at our expense up the road, tying in the properties across the street and the house next to us. And then we continued that sewer across our frontage all the way over and to tide in the animal hospital. So we brought sewer up. My father's in the process of conveying easement to the city where the sewer comes off the Route twelve right away and onto the frontage of our property. The state uh back when they built Route twelve, you know, it's a hill coming down from Sterling to us. And so there's a series of catch basins that they collect and then periodically they just sit up. I'm gonna shoot a pipe across the street with the discharge from the road runoff. So there is a drain manhole and a flare end that comes across and hits this swale that runs to the back to the wetland resource area. We're proposing to relocate that parallel to the front of the building and then um tie it in to a manhole before it hits that flare end. We have to file with Mass DOT. We have filed for the curb cut permit. We filed for the water, well, we have to file for the water connection permits in conjunction with the DPW since the water main is within the right of way. The city technically owns that right, so we have to file it together with John Roseberry to do the two water tie-ins. Then we have to submit a third filing for the relocation of the state's drain line. Uh, even though we're not tying in where we're simply moving it where it cuts diagonally across our site, we're moving it to the perimeter of our site, but since it's technically their drain line and all the works on our property, we still have to ask for their permission, which I find kind of odd, kind of odd, but it is Mass DOT, so. There is a wetland at the rear of the site. It's a hundred foot wetland buffer. We've submitted a notice of intent and Conservation Commission has already issued an order of conditions for the project. We received back some comments and we from the various department heads. We issued a response letter dated August twenty third. Board of Health was asking for a dumpster location, which is a fenced dumpster location proposed between the two buildings. The general question is, will these commercial buildings creating any noise? Well, obviously not the buildings themselves. Potentially the activity of loading and unloading equipment. Um, but that's pretty consistent from what's going on. As you go up Route twelve, you have uh the former TAC site, the site next to that. So it's it's a pretty industrial area. We don't have any direct residential rebutters. Across the street is zone residential, but the actual closest resident is the root house that's over on Willard Street, which would be across the wetlands, across the pond.
Right.
Over to them. That's what the buildings will be. Again, small office area and then garage space here. The garages will have drive-in doors, so this is showing that there'll be floor drains connected to an oil water separator to catch any potential leaks off the vehicles that would then discharge to the city sewer. So that's all collected and not going towards the stormwater management area. DPW, uh, he wanted us to change sewer manhole two to a full manhole instead of a doghouse manhole. Uh, so we changed the detail accordingly. A Mass DOT permit is required, which I just went over for the water connections. The building inspector approves. It's an MU one use, so it's allowed use by special permit. Conservation requests native plantings and use of native seed mix to stabilize. And so our landscape plan reflects that. Fire department need more information on snow removal plan. So we are showing on the first sheet uh, a snow storage area here uh on site. And then obviously being in the construction business, owning dump trucks and loaders, if there's back-to-back storm events and the need to haul away, then that's something they can certainly self-reform. Police wants contact information, which um they'll certainly provide so that, you know, if there's an event after the facility is complete, they know who to reach out to. The assessor had no concerns. Uh, property site area and zoning seem to be sufficient. Planning and development, police and fire department will review the site plan, determine if any proposed structures will be ready. So we just acknowledge that comment. Proposed concrete sidewalk that's here from the parking handicap space to the building. We can mention that at five feet. Uh, lighting, we added a lighting plan. That's in the revised plan set. This is one um twenty two sixty one point one. The plan must display all property boundaries and the use and ownership of adjacent land and location and use of any building on within three hundred feet of the boundary. Um, so this is the old light gauge rail that some of you might remember that ran from Willard Street up uh through to Gitec. So there's a strip of land there and then there's the pond and some wetlands. So the other properties are, would be way off the plan at three hundred feet. There's the Jehovah's Witnesses.
So they're farther than three hundred feet away?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Jehovah's Witnesses and then the site next to them, this board issued site plan approval for that two-story building. And then uh the house adjacent to that. And then we have Lomester Animal Hospital and then the former TAC property that another similar contractor uses and then another contractor use. And then the undeveloped land of Mr. Xaris across the street with the exception of the Domination Plummin's that's located in the resident residential district, but obviously is not a residential use. So I think the intent of that regulation is met on the plan set. Um, and certainly with the board's familiarity of the surrounding projects. Proposed use of the building should be added to the plan. We did that. Couple edits to the parking plan. Snow storage was added to the plant revised plan. Dumpster was added to the revised plan. Any no freestanding signs are currently proposed. So that's why there's nothing provided for that. Loading and unloading areas. So these are all um drive-in commercial sized doors, so they are indicated on the plan. So the truck will come in and you will pull in to any one of these garage bays. There's not a a loading bay as you would have for a dock plate of application. Um, architectural plans, he's still in the process of preparing those. We'd be happy to have the condition that we provide a copy to him, copy of them to the board. Uh, it would be a, you know, a standard pre-engineered contractor style styling.
Good condition.
Okay.
That's worse.
DPW, you okay, Sal?
No.
And good, he needs to climb over the fence a few times.
I need to climb over a chair a couple of times. That would be enough today. So. He's a troublemaker. So we've got sixteen packets, right, Patrick?
Yes.
How many required?
Uh.
Based on usage.
We have seventeen required, seventeen provided.
Okay, so.
Striped.
Striped.
Right.
Now you gotta have construction vehicles, stuff like that. You can have probably uh trailers and.
Yeah, only nine are required.
I haven't read the count. I thought it was seventeen. One, um.
Two, eight, nine.
Is this just, I didn't, Ryan's got on here, six employee plus six vehicle plus two, that doesn't seem right.
We have fourteen spaces.
Yeah, booking.
And you have one space.
Yeah.
Per four hundred square feet.
For the office, right.
Three. And that's seventeen.
What's the industrial requirement? I'm sorry, I'll I'll do my head.
It's per use, it's not per zone.
Oh, per use, yeah.
Right. So just one question, you know, now you really have construction vehicles stored there. You got the Jehovah's Witness place on one side, the animal hospital. Any fencing going along that along that property line that's gonna shield some of that from uh from the uh.
Yeah, so there's the, we have landscaping proposed on both sides as a landscaping plan in the set.
Because, you know, we see a lot of construction yards where all of a sudden we just see a lot of piles of uh trucks start parking there and everything's parked there. And we just need that new ordinance to kind of protect uh, you know, neighbors from that kind of a site.
Yeah. Right.
So I don't know if, you know.
We got you covered.
Alright.
So I've got landscaping proposed all along here. And landscaping proposed along there.
Patrick, what what is the landscaping? I mean, are they trees or shrubbery?
Freeman eagles, dogwoods, cypresses, and then some cherries and eight spruces, uh eight blue spruces and two white spruces. So
Okay.
We have a a on-staff landscaping architect.
Yep.
In our office, so he puts that together.
I just wanna make sure that we have some of this out.
Yes. Yep.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
If I could, before calling, if I could just finish going through the department assignments and then I'm happy to.
I was just gonna.
Cause I might hit on him. I might hit on him as we go.
You're gonna skip into the end, cause everything else looks like it's net.
We're on number seven.
Seven?
Signage.
Signage, um, I know I covered loading and unloading, I covered our elevation. Stormwater runoff, landscaping I just talked about. Side yard setbacks, we landscape those, exposed storage areas. We screen those. So the uh eleven D, where a business or industrial use abuts a residential district, a landscape buffer fifty feet in depth designed to mitigate the impact of the business or industrial use on abutting residential districts may be required. So for us, it's MU one, it's residential here, but we're separated by Route twelve.
Right.
So therefore a fifty foot buffer may be required as the the regulation on it. I wouldn't think in this instance that's where it may be required. I wouldn't
Yeah.
Right.
see enforcing a fifty foot buffer back
No, that'd be a setback.
from Route twelve. Um, landscape buffer street of fifteen feet wide, so we're gonna have the sad landscaping here to the extent that we could. As I mentioned, this is the sewer easement. So we have to be sensitive to the utilities that are below that, but we did add some planting. Um, sidewalks must be provided to enable pedestrian access to adjacent properties. That's twenty two sixty three, one point four point three point one. I don't see how that would, this is, you know, this isn't, there's no retail or public component to this. This is somebody's shop essentially, so I I wouldn't see any back and forth between the Jehovah's and our site and I think the animal hospital is kind of taking the liberty of parking on this for.
Yeah. And the dogs and cats. Yeah, extra hydrants making noise.
Yeah. Then the last one I wanna talk to was the traffic impact statement per twenty two sixty three dash two point three. So we are requesting a waiver from that. I don't feel that the, you know, the ten to twelve, maybe fifteen employees. We could certainly do one and I could guarantee with a hundred and fifty percent certainty that it would say this project would have no effect on the traffic of Route twelve because you're talking, you know, fifteen thousand cars a day in our ten aren't gonna change that one hundred, one hundred and fifty percent in either direction.
So you skipped over the one I was gonna ask.
So. Ah, I took it on purpose.
Right before, number thirteen, the sidewalks. It says, uh, the comment there is the board will evaluate the proposed sidewalks and determine if they're sufficient. Can you elaborate on what it is we're evaluating?
Whether they needed or not.
I think.
Well, it says proposed sidewalks.
There is no proposed sidewalks. The only sidewalk is on the site itself. Uh, from to the.
Which corner?
Number thirteen is right above the traffic impact statement.
Sidewalks must be provided to enable pedestrian access to adjacent properties.
And then the comment underneath it says the board will evaluate the proposed sidewalks and determine if they're sufficient.
Or lack thereof. You're looking at a different letter than me.
You're looking at my memo or you're looking at?
Yeah, you're looking at.
Oh, you're looking at.
I'm looking at Elizabeth's here.
Yeah, alright.
Sorry.
So I I, yeah, just to reiterate, I don't see where we would wanna do sidewalks from our site to the Kingdom Hall or our.
No, I'm. So just making, we don't have to do anything. It just says the board will evaluate the.
No. You can just say, yeah, I agree, Patrick, cause this is the best spot to put sidewalks from one to the other.
Yeah. Fine, okay. And then the, Elizabeth had a question of a special permit? That's also my way to use that way.
Um, no, originally they did not provide me with a criteria addressing section twenty two dash thirteen, but then after my first review memo, then they supplied it.
But now it's wrong. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good, Richard. Very good questions. Do you have anything that you wanna add? Okay, again, I'll ask for the audience. So I have anyone in the audience?
Who's closer than?
The whole crowd that we have here. Um, okay. okay, with that.
I'll move closer to you.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to close
Well.
the public meeting for. Okay, on the public, all favors say aye? Aye, both say no? Motion carries.
And now, now I move to close the meeting for modification of site.
That's like.
A special purpose.
Special purpose.
Special purpose.
Motion is in order, eleven second. Motion made in second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks Patrick.
A look, help me, modification of site plan application. For one-five-five Tanzeo Road, map three twenty parcel three point three, vehicle overflow lot. Oh, he's backing it.
So uh for the record, Chris Anderson.
Oh, yeah, you wanna do.
Does the special power open also?
You can do.
Yeah, we can, I openly need special permit to use the.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, just to make it.
Yeah, open the public domain special permit.
Good call, Chris.
Just have this one fifty-five Tanzeo, three twenty parcel three three vehicle overflow lot.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
Great, great. Uh for the record, Chris Anderson, Handing Engineering, here on behalf of uh Tully Storage Corp. For the modifications to an existing site plan as well as a special permit for vehicle for storage lot. Um just to recap, we have board on the history of the site, uh this was before the board back way back in twenty nineteen for a mini ware or mini self-storage facility. Uh which was comprised of a total of five structures, um as well as a supplemental use for a contractor's yard, trade shop building itself. Um at this point in time, the applicant is has been working toward building out the entire site. Uh at this point in time, there are there are three of the five buildings have been constructed. Um primarily going from a westerly to an easterly direction, so there are two more buildings that are to be built. In the interim, as he is preparing financial requirements and everything like that to go for the next building. He's you seeking to utilize the lot as an overflow vehicle storage lot. As consistent with the newly enacted regulation of Arizona ordinance. Um as part of this, the storage lot would be located within the original limits of disturbance, um that was approved by for the um self-storage facility itself. Um since that time, he has installed a wrought iron fence along Tanzeo Road uh to shield uh the site from Tanzeo Road. As well as providing compliance with the original decision. Um that also has a scrim privacy screen fence material will also want to further shield view from Tanzeo Road. But it's the intent to utilize this area as a storage lot, um we have laid out a total of twenty, I think we're over considering large vehicle spaces which are ten by forty. Uh which can accom- accommodate RVs, trailers, uh campers and some larger dump trucks and stuff like that of the sort. Uh in addition to that, uh we're also providing a total of twenty-nine standard vehicle spaces. Um that comply with the zoning ordinance requirements for parking. In addition to that, uh we have also uh laid out the parking facility also to comply with the parking regulations dimensionally, if you will. Uh to maintain access to both the existing facilities as well as all the individual parking spots. The entire area will be underlaid uh with an asphalt regrinding pigment uh type, uh which is a durable dustless material. Trying to avoid full pavement because it's still intending to construct the site out as originally designed. Um it would make absolutely no sense to pave the site in order to clean back up in the coming years. Um so with that being said, um we do acknowledge he's still intending on building out the site. And obviously as he builds uh buildings outs, we would be coming back before the board for a modification of the special permit to accommodate the um reduced capacity for the overflowed vehicle lot as well as providing an update to the board on the status of the site plan approval as it proceeds through these iterations. Um with that being said, um I would leave it to the board if there's any comments or questions, we have received department head comment, um and we've addressed those comments, um as well as received additional comment from uh Elizabeth which kind of referred to the board on that.
So Chris, he's looking for you know creating twenty ten by forty spots?
Correct.
And that's the overflow lot, considered to be the overflow lot?
So the the overflow lot would be considered the twenty large spaces and the twenty-nine smaller.
Smaller spaces.
Correct.
So he's looking for a total of forty-nine?
Correct.
And and uh he has fencing all along the perimeter, privacy fencing along the whole perimeter?
Not along the entire, not along the entire perimeter because as you go towards the rear of the site
Lighting?
there's a significant slope that separates the rest of the property from the developed one.
The available portion of the site, if you will. Does he comply with all the new regulations that was put in place, the overflow lots?
If there are curbs, yes, he does.
I know he's been working on this a long time.
And one of the primary components of that was shielding it from public view, if you will. Uh so Tanzeo Road, as I said, um has a wrought iron fence with a scrim screening on it. And as you drive into the site, the road's actually about six feet lower below, Tanzeo Road is six feet lower than the site, and so you're looking up and over a fence in order to actually see the site. So it's it's very well shielded from the public.
Yeah, I would down the the other thing against, yeah.
Yeah, just asking questions.
With the man.
Snow storage, did he accommodate for any additional snow storage?
Correct, we have a uh area right on the northern side of the site, um and another smaller area located down as pulls and pushed down in towards the uh test area. And applicant is also in charge of some operations, so.
And it was, there was lighting requirement too, right?
So we did request a waiver for the lighting, uh this kind of this use or this property is gated at night. So people don't go in and out of it, and if you go into it during the nighttime, it's a special case. Um but.
Well, in the storage areas, they can get it depending.
Nope, it's all gated.
So gated, even at night.
There's one way in, one way out, um so there's some.
And they don't allow it in the round.
You have to get a hold of the.
Of the.
Lanor, um there are some security wall pack lines around these uh
Those.
Buildings, but that's typical of any developed.
Right.
But because it's gated and these kind of uses don't happen at night unless there's a supreme emergency, say if a self-pow operation has their truck here and they have to get to it at night. That would be the most that you'll ever see at any time, so this is exclusively almost a daytime operations facility.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, anyway? Okay. As we move along. Uh I'll call for a uh vote to close the public meeting, modification of site plan.
Did you wanna mention the comments from the um
Oh.
the licensing commission that were in the on your.
Yeah, I thought we, okay, go ahead.
Um there's a message from Michelle Madu who is the clerk for the licensing commission. And there's an email, um they had a lot of questions um on September eleventh. And most of them were answered, but if you look, there's one that's highlighted um on page two of the comments that you have. That says it is not the intent of this lot to be utilized by car dealerships to store excess vehicles or sell vehicles on the lot. The license commission is requesting that the following restrictions be placed on the permit. The lot is prohibited from doing business with class one to two or class three dealer.
Is but is that within our jurisdiction to make that condition? Can we make that condition?
No.
Don't you have to go before the licensing commission?
If you go before the licensing commission anyway, but.
Yeah, well, you know.
We have no issue with that, creating a condition of approval.
He's just, oh, take the yeah, this is it. Because we've had other lots like this turn into dump offs for the auto auction. And you know, they brought the cars there forever and then the carriers are there parked there and they're just suffering a bit of help.
In the past with my experience with this board is that I've been a part of those kinds of projects and you do
Yeah.
there's one other step in that and then goes to licensing, but you do have to provide all that information.
Yeah.
Uh but I can speak that that will not be a problem to propose that condition upon us for that one, uh for a licensing commission.
No, no licensing requirement, yeah.
There's no licensing requirement, I had to provide the board, create that little bit of extra satisfaction, if you will, uh that site's properly protected.
Right.
We have no issue with that.
Mm-hmm.
I can, with that said, can I I move to close the site, the open meeting?
Site plan.
From the uh for the site plan.
Carol, can we just open it to the audience for the record?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for the audience.
They make the audience tonight, you know.
Yeah. I'll ask again for the audience, okay, go ahead, Carol.
I I make a motion to close the open uh public hearing for the modification of the site plan.
Open.
Okay.
Motion made in second to close the public meeting for modification of the site plan. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion no?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And make a motion to close the um open public um hearing for the special permit.
Public permit. Okay, I have a motion made in second to close the special permit. Any further discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Let's figure that out.
Okay, I think that's.
Let's hear Chris.
Okay, now we take, can we go?
Next.
We already did open the meeting, we did the call to order, the vote to minutes.
Motion to accept. So, Paul Weiser. You're slipping.
Sorry.
I don't think he's slipping, I think Jason was just that much.
He didn't get it. He didn't wanna get it, he wanted. I have a motion to accept a minute, so the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Okay, we've already done the in and out of fifty-four. Site plan application for twenty-one Jungle Road. Map three oh one parcel one industrial warehouse manufacturing.
Yeah, I just wanted to note for the board, um
You can't schedule it.
to note for the board was that we can't schedule it yet because the purchase and sale agreement hasn't been signed yet, so the property owner or the applicant doesn't yet own the property, it's it should be soon, but it's not yet.
So motion to table.
We thought it could happen before the meeting, but it didn't.
I have a motion to table. Any discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Both say no?
Don't ask me what it is.
Motion carries.
Why is it?
Okay, five fifty-five Johnny Appleseed.
Okay, site plan application, five-five-five Johnny Appleseed lane, map two four one parcel two.
This is for a ground-mounted solar, one-side solar system um at a residence, a residential district.
Okay, and it's scheduled for when?
We can do November sixth at six thirty.
So.
Second.
November fifth?
Six.
Six.
Six? Six thirty. Okay, it'll be scheduled for number six, November sixth at six thirty. Any discussion? Hear none, call for the vote, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Special application for for special permit application. Plus five five Johnny Appleseed lane, map two four one parcel two. It should be scheduled November sixth to six thirty-five.
Six thirty-one.
Six thirty-one.
Oh, six thirty-one, okay.
So move, but.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Open site application, ten Jungle Road map, three hundred parcel thirteen A, bank with drive-through, restaurant with drive-through and retail.
Any waivers?
Yes.
Yes.
It's conditions.
Yeah, no work conditions.
Well, to the, do the waivers first and the conditions of them?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there any waivers?
The waiver, oh, actually no, there was not.
No, it's.
No, I think there are any waivers.
So the conditions? Conditions were to get the wording from the traffic analysis study.
Oh, no.
It was all that, the the condition should be all of the recommendations from the traffic engineer. That was agreed to by the.
Yeah, and and the wording that he used, uh and and also not called them liable for.
To to be to be worded by the engineer and the traffic.
That's correct.
Uh the and the applicant in consultation with Elizabeth, if we can say that.
Yeah, why not?
And can.
Concurrents.
And you know, so.
In concurrents.
For the outstanding department head of projects.
Again, you wanna keep them safe from the time or the approval of the DOT project. Time, even though it looks like it's more, we don't wanna.
Yes.
Get him sitting out.
So this we can.
So that's why we discussed that one.
So just to make sure that's right, written correctly.
So the the primary one is that we get the the recommendation from the peer review uh engineer.
He said he was gonna work the.
All this.
He's gonna work on you.
And give it all the proper wording
And he would like, so.
to encompass uh the Department of Public Works and the uh the implementation of the plan.
And the uh the kind of markings, what was.
Yeah.
All of the recommendations.
In mention of the plan, which we have is all the markings. And to interface with the Department of Public Works, okay, to um
That's for the.
for the proposed changes, signaling changes.
That's DOT.
Yeah, great.
DOT or DPW?
No, DOT is.
DOT.
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 The markings on the road are DPW, but were the.
Okay, that was, that was separate, the markings on the road uh uh to be under the
So. Was.
the condition of the.
What's what's that, please?
As a specifications and determined by Lemonster Department of Public Works.
Would the applicant request DOT?
Right.
To interface with DOT for proposed.
Signal.
Signalization and signalization changes.
I would really rather keep the motion that we incorporate all of the changes, right?
Well.
Well, you know, you gotta you gotta do this in a way that DOTs, like he said, you gotta do this in a way that DOTs that they can apply for the permit.
Alright.
I have a right.
But that's what's. But that's that's one of the recommendations of the traffic engineer, so we don't have to rephrase it if we just
Yeah, we've got it.
adopt what they recommended and the applicant has agreed to, I'd rather not try and summarize it this.
Our recommendations from.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, Paul. What we have to do is in our, what they're, what the recommendation is that this board okay, is in favor of the signalization changes as okay proposed.
It's gonna be.
So and it was, they're looking for uh an input from us, that we're looking for the changes. And those changes have to be determined uh as they outlined by our our peer review engineer.
And all other recommendations by the traffic engineer.
Right, that's our peer review.
I speak for the chair. Can we just make it in a way, again, we we've worked with Jeff for a long on a multiple projects, just that I think the three of us agree to the final because the letter is a little bit loose and I think we.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I actually.
But we, what I wanna make sure, as he mentioned, is that the that this is approved by the board. And that we're looking for this.
On condition of.
That we're we're requested.
Right.
Okay.
And we, yeah, and we do agree, I mean, to address all of all the headedness.
Yeah.
Right.
And Elizabeth will speak on it.
That is great.
That one just needs to be.
It's gonna be tweaked, okay?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna work with him.
Alright, that's the, I don't, we should do the standard all permitted comments, or the right to do anything else.
Okay. And then does the planning and development director shall review to make sure all conditions have been met prior to the C R O?
Right.
Okay.
And make sure.
And and then one of the things, because of the striping, specifically it said that it's not in is from the DPW that all striping will be under the direction uh of Lemonster DPW standards.
What did, did he say that's the requirement?
Well, didn't. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing we wanna make sure.
That's separate, one thing is, one thing is get it striped, the second part is what is the standard to get it striped?
Yeah.
Per Lemonster regulations.
Yeah, the Department of Public Regulation, so one is to get it striped and it's what, how they stripe it. Okay? Any further discussion?
I I just wanna, I'm again, I'm commending this applicant, but he could, because I think the onus is now on them and they've agreed to it. Even because they're they're late coming to the show and so frankly Walmart all this
The show paid for this.
mobile across the street.
Just like.
This the surgical center.
Yeah.
Whoever else is over there, they should be thankful for because and and the city of Lemister, cause I think they're going to improve this area. So that's all I have to say.
We should have done it like we did the hospital where all the businesses related to that area had a part.
Yeah.
We redesigned or traffic improvements.
Alright.
So thank you for going above.
Okay, we had.
Well, they're working on it now, I don't know what happened, but they've been working on on Route twelve for the last six months.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, about two years.
Well.
Yeah.
It takes a long time.
Okay, uh let's let's move along.
I think.
I had to have a motion.
Do you have a vote?
I have that motion.
We don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, no, we have.
And 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 by the way, um also the medical center down the street, which is huge and has a million cars, not no no discussion, we had no discussion
That's right. Why? That's right. No.
For beating up a small bank and a Starbucks.
I agree. Yeah.
So the motion.
I don't know why now.
So the motion again was that we are going to. So the motion again was that we are going to require the traffic engineer, the applicant.
Motion for approval, right.
Motion to approve, right.
Right. Motion for approval
With with all of those.
with the direct documentation from the traffic
The traffic engineer.
analysis and the applicant
And and.
in working with Elizabeth to define the correct way to state it.
Yeah. Use the correct language to incorporate what the traffic engineer proposed.
I want to get up to.
Plus, this is the most permanent comments and the new review priority list.
Yeah. That's as good as we're gonna get, to more and more of the assistance on this one. I'm sorry.
I think they have soccer to.
There you go, please, thank move and second.
Alright, let's go.
Okay, uh I have a motion made and seconded. No, wait a minute, did we, there were no waivers?
No.
No waivers.
Okay. Do we have any conditions?
We just sent them on.
We just sent them on.
That is a.
Just we have them on. Just make Paul say them again, told me we have those.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Same way.
Okay, we're covering the conditions, all in favor of the the project, ask conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, after that by Paul.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, Dean second.
Dean second by Dean. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to talk to you, appreciate it.
Nice to like.
Thank you.
Site plan application, twelve eighty-one Central Street, map thirty parcel sixty-two, six point two. Um.
We need to do a special permit first.
We have a waiver for the um
We have a waiver.
traffic impact statement. Section twenty-two dash sixty-three point two point three.
Uh motion to approve the waiver.
Second. It's on the site plan.
Yep.
That is correct. I have a waiver on.
Landscape architect, isn't it? Oh, that was two.
No, they didn't.
No, no, they have the landscape architect.
He has his own, he has his own.
He has his own.
Yeah, yeah, he has his own.
That's good.
Okay, site plan. And. So we only have one one waiver.
The first one.
All.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Oh, and I I had one, I had um
Oh, do we have to wait?
This is twelve eighty-one Central Street. Um condition of architectural plans and to revise the parking given for the use.
And what about the sidewalk, not being me and.
Right.
And what about the fifty-foot buffer from a residential?
That was another way, right? That's correct. So all the four of those things.
Okay, you have four waivers, uh on the buffer, the parking, sidewalk. And uh
The sidewalk for parking and what's the other?
It's a fifty feet.
No, that's the buffer.
That's the buffer.
That's the waiver.
Calc of. Uh the sidewalk, oh, sorry.
Revised the.
Park calculation.
The hydro board.
That's not a.
That's off, like that's not a waiver, that's.
Condition.
Yeah.
That's a condition. Okay, so the first one, the waivers, all in favor of the waivers?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Vote say no. Motion carries, do we have a condition?
Well, we need an approval, this this is site plan, yeah.
The site plan, okay.
We need special.
The said approve the site plan with uh
Waivers.
with waivers. All in favor say aye.
We already did.
Aye.
No, I didn't get it.
That's just a waiver.
That just it just a waiver, then you gotta do it with a a.
Right. I I moved to exactly.
Say say plan with waiver, all in favor say aye.
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 Vote say no, motion carries. Special permit use application, twelve eighty-one Central Street, map five hundred.
Do you.
Oh, we need the condition.
What are the conditions, that's what I was.
We needed the condition that they adjust the table on of the.
We said that one.
I thought I said the.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Your condition of the the table.
Okay.
Alright, special permit, I make a we don't need the waivers for the special permit because they they apply to the site plan.
That is correct.
So I make a motion to approve the issuance of the special permit of the same project with the same conditions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Okay, modification of site plan application, one five five Tansio Road map, three twenty parcel three dash three, vehicle overflow lot.
Motion to approve.
I.
There weren't any conditions.
Yeah, there were no conditions.
You know, two wave, two conditions?
There's two waivers.
A waivers.
Two waivers.
Two waivers.
We're say uh on the landscape architect.
Landscaping and the lighting.
And lighting.
The lighting. Oh, okay.
Pot potential.
So motion to.
And the true on the.
To raise this commission, say.
Yeah, that's a condition.
This.
Okay, just yeah.
That's a condition, no, that's a waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's six section twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point one and section twenty-two dash fifty-eight point six.
We can make that a condition.
Yeah.
The waivers.
Motion to approve the two waivers.
Second.
I have a motion made and second to approve the two waivers on site plan application five five, one five five Tansio Road. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Okay. Approval uh modification site uh special permit. Use application, one five five Tansio, map three twenty, parcel three point three vehicle overflow lot. And that's a dish of the special permit.
With the condition of the licensing commission.
And the conditions would cover it under the modification. So this is use. Okay, and I don't think we had any waivers on the use.
No, but do we want to attach this condition from the licensing commission?
No, it's.
Yeah, that's when I think we should do it under the.
Right, it would be.
The special permit and license, well, okay.
I know.
The special permit and license commission was that.
We gotta promise them to do business with car dealers. Deal with use, right.
Yeah.
Deal with use.
Oh, cars, right.
Think you swear.
Then I can store cars for car dealers. Okay. I'm not sure how we would control that, but.
We didn't, we we don't police it anyway.
Yeah.
We can ask.
So we'll make that a condition that it's not uh not store cars for car dealers.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
A a word it as as it's warranted.
Yes.
Okay, probably. Okay, so then we have special permit use application, one five five Tansio Road with conditions. Uh I have a motion.
Oh, and now they they is this a condition just as he adjusts and builds those storage unit units, it's gonna shrink the overflow lot.
Precisely, but then he when he does that.
So yeah, then it's come out of the site plan.
He'll come back with a modification.
Okay, good, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
So I I make the motion to to approve the special permit with the condition.
Yeah.
I have a motion made and seconded.
And then the planning director must review.
Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Did did we vote on, I don't recall voting on the site plan.
I don't, I didn't.
We did the waivers for the site plan, but we haven't voted on.
It went, okay.
Right.
On the site plan.
I make that motion with the waivers.
Motion accept uh site plan with waivers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
I said five minutes ago.
Deal, so we get started. Alright, so it's a good job, what?
Very good for it.
Come on.
I have a couple things, I'll be I'll be pretty quick here. First of all, I wanna say um for the budget for this fiscal year, we.
I I know, I was just gonna say that, can we stop for one second, did we do fifty-four Tannet Street, was that not?
Yeah, we already did that.
Well, we we did that right off at the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
But we did it.
Yeah, we moved, we went to that before they published it.
But can I just say something real quick?
Yes, but it's not.
So we approved the N R, but it's actually not listed again under the.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point, good job.
Uh it's not on the agenda, I oversight.
Yeah.
Alright, so were there any
Good catch.
Oversight.
Were there any um conditions or waivers?
That's just.
I I don't know.
Wait a minute, I can take.
There was one waiver for landscape architects, and I think the only condition was making sure fire was okay with.
Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, I I I.
Alright, so I I.
H O A.
H O A conditions, landscaping waiver.
That is correct. Okay, we missed that, okay.
Um.
No, no, no business.
And Chris to work with the fire department, yeah. So landscaping waiver first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Set twenty-two dash sixty point one.
And then for conditions, H O A condition of approval, they they're gonna do it, and then the fire department access road, Chris to work with the.
Do a twenty?
On the common.
Well, they were supposed to.
Supposed to be twenty-three, you can give him any or two.
Maybe we had to give him a two.
But we're waiting for the letter from.
So.
We got the verbal okay, right?
Condition.
To receive written application.
That's a kitchen condition of approval, the receipt of the letter from the fire department accepting eighteen feet with a two-foot.
Well, if they want twenty, they're gonna accept the solution of the two feet of stone.
Right. Of stone.
So he's just received the letter from the fire department saying that the uh eighteen plus two is is adequate for fire response.
Yeah.
For us.
So you got a mo- you got a motion?
Yeah, move.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
By sound. Any further discussion?
Move along. Move it along.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes. Let's see.
Director's report.
Yes, here we go.
Alright, I'm really excited because this year for the budget, and you probably all already know this already, but we'll get it on the record. Um we got it approved to uh eliminate the part-time clerk position and then create a new position for assistant planning director, and I'm really excited, we did a series of interviews uh in July and in September, we had Stephanie Witten step in for the position. And um we're just expecting great things from the department, more great things.
Congrats.
Nice to talk to you.
Alright, that's all.
Yeah, you should welcome up the race. Yeah, that's good. They have to find track now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's really cool.
It is cool.
That's great. Um next thing, um some of you are already aware, some of you are serving on this, we um the mayor's asset, um our department work on looking for solutions for housing in Lehmster, we have a housing crisis in the state, we have a housing crisis locally. How can we create more housing when most of the city is already built out? What can we do to change our zoning amendment zoning regulations to allow for more housing, um so we're working on that. John is sitting in the committee, Dean is sitting in the committee, and um it's gonna come to you eventually because once we have zoning ideas, it's gotta come from the planning board.
Tannet Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, one.
It's gonna come through you anyway.
From all of Denny Field.
Yeah, exactly.
But if anybody wants the minutes or the um
Is that I agree with you?
Agendas, I can send this to you if they're interested. If you're more interested. Um and then the next thing on my report is the SNEPA conference, Southern New England, American chapter of the planning association. Their meeting in Hartford, can New Haven, Connecticut, Thursday and Friday, I'm gonna go. And hopefully maybe I'll learn more about housing there.
That's good.
Some other, any other topics that are relevant to Lehmster, I look for those.
Excellent.
Thank you, great.
And that's all I have.
Very good.
Okay. The executive session.
Right, motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Ajourned.
Aye.
Vote say no.
Make sure that's a.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell where I'm talking.